Hi, everybody. Welcome to our Village Board meeting at, it's our November Board meeting. I can't believe we're in November already. So it's nice to see everybody. If you have a moment, could you please stand and join us in the pledge? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. There are agendas on the back table. If you didn't have an opportunity to get one, there's some back there. I'm going to start with staff reports at the top of the page. Altamont Fire Department, do you have anything else you want to report?
Just that we remove the Schenectady Holiday Parade off of my zone 610.
Okay, Schenectady Holiday Parade, okay.
Why aren't we going?
Gotcha.
Paul, why aren't we going?
We didn't get the paperwork due in time.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
Gotcha. All right. So when we do that motion, we'll just amend that.
Okay.
Okay. Police Department, I haven't seen Todd this evening yet. They must have got tied up, but if he comes in, we can give him a chance afterwards to talk about things. We got a written report from Public Works. If you had a chance to review it. Does anybody have any questions? Chris is here this evening. If you do, we're in the middle of, DPW's in the middle of, you know, loose leaf pickup right now, so it's a big thing. We have like till the 21st of November, so that's still going on. So, you know, get your leaves out there. They're starting to fall really fast now. I think mine are done at my house, which is good. After tonight, yes, everything may blow away tonight. So that's, mine blow down, whip away. So anybody that lives down there, sorry. That's just the way it goes. They go right down there. I know, exactly. I figure they all end up at Dave's house at the end. That's basically it. So that's going on, and I think that's all I have right now, since I don't see the Police Department at the moment. We have public comment. If you have a comment about anything except, I'd ask you to hold your comments on the public hearing to that time, but if you have anything else you'd like to share with the Board, the mic is open, and you are welcome to come on up.
You know I was going to talk.
Dave Burke, I'm the President of Historic Altamont. Good evening, everyone. I'm here to thank the Village for being part of the Altamont Community Kiosk efforts and also the kiosk ribbon-cutting celebration. The ribbon-cutting ceremony was a fantastic success. There was a great turnout by our community and many elected officials, including Paul Tonko, Pat Fahey, Gabriella Romero, Amanda Beadle, Mark Rim, and Jeff Perlee joined us. But more importantly, I want to thank Sandra Sarafino and Nick Ferencoff for also being part of that group. Wish Nick was here to hear this. Nick sharing his thoughtful and passionate comments about Altamont was the highlight for me.
He did a great job.
I also want to thank the Altamont Police Department, the DPW, and the Fire Department for their participation. Without their help, it wouldn't have happened. The Altamont Enterprise did their typical excellent coverage of an Altamont event, and we were thrilled to see that they put it on their front cover. For anybody that missed the opening remarks, they can be reviewed from a link on the Historic Altamont website or on our Facebook page. So all the, a little bit of a ceremony at the beginning was recorded, and the link is there. Building the kiosk was the first part of the Historic Altamont Zarpa Grant. The second part is the Altamont Trails Master Plan. This plan was developed by Historic Altamont, a committee of interested local citizens, and La Bella Associates, a highly regarded international planning organization. We're in the very final editing stages, and we'll share that plan with you soon. Gilderlin is going to reference the plan in their new 2025 Town of Gilderlin Comprehensive Plan, so we're very happy about that. The Altamont Story Map has a few updates. There are two new historical markers that the Gilderlin Historical Society recently unveiled on West Fall Road. Those have been added, and if you've noticed, there's a brand-new historic marker at the Crowns Inn on 146, replacing the one that was destroyed. That also has been updated. Planning is now underway for a new Story Map tab that will note historic buildings in Altamont that are not recognized by historic markers or the museum in the streets. A couple of examples would be the Masonic Temple and Gardner Gurney's home, which is on the National Historic Register and was built in the 1780s. We welcome and encourage the Village and our community's input on this new tab. And I might add, since we went live with the Altamont Story Map in January, we've already had over 3,300 hits.
Great, nice.
People are checking it out.
Yeah.
The next Historic Altamont meeting is December 3 at the Masonic Temple. Everyone is always welcome, and I wish you to attend, and I want to wish everybody a fantastic holiday season. Thank you.
Thank you. And I know, if you haven't had a chance to see the video, I saw it through somebody sending me the video. I was on vacation during that kiosk opening and ribbon-cutting, so I didn't get the opportunity, but the video was great. Nick did a fantastic job, and I was really proud of him.
It was very touching.
Yeah, it was great, yeah. So, yeah, check it out. It's a nice video. I was going to add one more thing about markers. We just set up, the DPW installed a new historic marker in Orsini Park that was once there that had disappeared during the road project many years ago, and with the help of Keith Lee, DPW, and myself, we went up there, and it's in place close to the post office. So that's another new one that just got put up days ago.
Oh, we'll add that.
Yeah, it's brand-new. I mean, very, and I think Keith Lee put something for the enterprise, maybe coming up this week or next week. He put something about the history of it all. So that's going in any week now, so.
I noticed it.
I'll add it as soon as I get it.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I think the information you might see tomorrow. I'm not positive.
It's Helderberg, and it's.
It's old Helderberg.
Yeah, it's the dude with the Tory and the loyalists.
Exactly, yeah. And it used to be there, it used to be up front somewhere, but we found that spot we thought was a better spot for it, so that was great. Anybody else have anything they want to share before I move on? No?
I have a question for Dave.
Okay, go ahead.
When, is it, we might want to, in our website, just remind people how to get to it, or have another, like, that the Story Map's been updated and something to that effect.
It's on one of the tabs across the Village.
But do people, the reason is, my in-laws and a bunch of their friends, I walked them through the whole entire thing this weekend. I just think that older people have no clue.
Excuse me?
Not, I didn't say, I was just saying, there may be a reminder on the website.
Let's rephrase that.
It would be nice. I would, you know what I meant.
I know what you meant.
Maybe a refresh, Dave, because I think that some of the older people can't find it and wouldn't know it was updated, and I'm going to work on that for you.
Work on that.
I didn't mean anything by that at all.
Experience.
That's a good one.
There you go.
There we go. All right.
Thanks, period.
All right, excellent. And there's always the opportunity, well, actually, I shouldn't say that. Let me go, let's move on. I was thinking about another opportunity, but I'll bring that up next month.
Yep.
All right. So I'm going to look at the Consider Approval of Treasures abstracts number 10 and 11. It's on, number one on our agenda. Everybody's had a chance to sign them.
Yep.
Michelle, would you make the motion for them?
I will.
Okay, Michelle is first, and who would like to be second?
Second.
Second, Sandra? And roll call, please.
Trustee Sarafino.
In favor.
Trustee Ganance.
In favor.
Trustee Scally.
In favor.
Mayor Danie.
In favor. I'm going to move down to item number two, which is our public hearing for this evening, and I'm going to ask our Village Council to open the hearing with the notice, if you don't mind. Thank you.
Notice is hereby given that a public hearing will be held before the Village Board for the Village of Altamont at the Village Community Center on the 5th of day of November 2025 at 7:00 PM regarding the adoption of a proposed local law amending certain sections of Chapter 124 of the Village Code regulating the control of dogs to require that dogs are not, that dogs are not on private property, to be kept on a physical leash and under the control of the owner or persons accompanying the dog. The law would also prohibit habitual loud barking, excuse, loud howling, barking, crying, or whining that lasts continually for periods of 10 minutes or intermittently for a consecutive period of 30 minutes. The law provides that the Village Board may also adopt rules and regulations to prohibit or restrict the days or times when dogs may be permitted on village property to ensure the presence of dogs does not conflict or interfere with scheduled or planned programming or permitted activities taking place on the premises. The proposed local law will also prohibit dogs within 10 feet of village playgrounds containing playground equipment. The proposed local law removes the prohibitions on chasing or barking after motor vehicles, female dogs in heat, and the language pertaining to hunting dogs and their owners. Interested persons are encouraged to attend the proposed hearing and submit comments for the Village Board's consideration. Copies of the proposed local law are available at the Village Clerk's Office during normal business hours for the purpose of inspection or procurement by interested persons.
Thank you. So I'll give you a little history, just so we can catch everybody up before I ask you to come up if you want to share something. We started looking at this upon request by Village residents a year ago, probably. I think it's about a year. And we had changed some of the things we were asked to change, which was having a physical leash, but then there was some thoughts about, there were other parts then that needed to be addressed that are in the law, because it was from 1972. We had not changed hardly anything, but there were a couple of things that I know trustee Ferencoff said, well, why don't we look at this further, because we didn't come to consensus. There were four of us here that we kind of had a split idea of what should be done, so instead of voting on it, we tabled it. We said, okay, let's take everything into consideration, take another look at this next year, talk to some more people that have laws in place, you know, redo some more research. So that's what we did this summer. We were trying to draft something. Some of the things that were mentioned in the public notice about being removed from the law were things that are moot if a dog is on a leash, so things like chasing after a car. It didn't seem like it needed to be there if you are controlling your dog with a physical leash. So that came out, and a couple of the dogs in heat thing as well. So that had changed. The habitual barking and sound for 10 minutes and 30 minutes, those timeframes, that has never changed. That is what the dog warden, or is it, dog officer, sorry, not warden, but dog officer from Gilderlin, that is what they use currently, because they actually address things like that for the Village. We don't have a dog control officer, but they dress, and that is the law in Gilderlin. So instead of just, so people would know, I wanted to put it more specifically, so people understood that it's in our law, it matches their law, they are our enforcement. So that was the, where those numbers came from. It is actually what we have always been doing. The only other change that is in there is on the enforcement part, because the old law from '72 had people, now, obviously, the police can go around, if they see something, they can act on it, but if somebody has a complaint to give, they want to make a formal complaint about whatever, and this, anything, this could be anything in our code, they would have to come in and make a statement and sign that, and that's for anything, but it was listed as coming to see the Village Justice. We don't have a Village Justice on call during the day, so it made no sense we would make it the police officers to come in and work with them on these things, okay? And they always call the dog officer anyway, and they work on it together. So those are the only changes to, since last year. I think most of them are the same, but there are a couple of those things did come out. So if you have, we did receive four letters from community members in this past week that are in our record, there were four in favor of the changes to the current law. And if you'd like to come up and say something, give us your opinion or share your thoughts on it, we'd love to hear from you, so the mic is open. If you have any questions, you can ask us after, when you come up. Pardon me.
Good evening. Deb Hax, 11 Whipple Way in Altamont. I'd just like to thank the Board and the Mayor for bringing this back to the table. I think it's something that's been long overdue. I just have a couple of questions. The, number one, under the prohibited acts run at large, that's including parks, correct?
Yes.
I mean, I know it says that it's all of Altamont, but.
Yep.
Okay, so I just, I just wanted to make that part of the public record. Under number four, and Mayor Danie, you kind of touched on this, on complaints. So let's just say we're in Bosunkell Park, there's dogs running off leash, we don't know the dogs, we don't know the person. Do we go up to the person and say, excuse me, but you're in violation of Section 124?
I would say no.
So then how do we, how do we, you know, complain? Do we then just?
Well, here's what I can tell you. I mean, unless a police officer, this goes for a noise disturbance or anything else, unless they visually see it, you know, they have to, they can do an investigation. So if somebody wants to say, listen, there were people, I don't know who they are, they were in the park with their dogs loose, could you come down? They call them, let them, let them come investigate it.
So you would call them at that point?
I would just call them at that point.
Okay, that's, that's what I wanted to clarify.
Absolutely. That's what they do now, yep.
Okay, good. The only, you know, again, I think this is great. It's really addressed a lot of the issues within the Village. The only other thing I would like to just state here is that New York State, Albany County, the town of Gilderlin, all require any dog over four months to be licensed. So I think the important thing there is, when you license a dog, you have to show proof of rabies. We don't want a dog off-leash or even on-leash to come up with someone and nip them or scratch them or do anything like that. So, you know, that's the only other thing I had to mention, and again, thank you for your, you know, years' work on this. I think it's a good law.
Thanks. Anybody else want to come up? Anybody, anytime. Feel free.
I'm Lindsay Giagni. I've lived in the Village on 3 Group Drive for 10 years now, and I moved my insurance agency to Maple Ave last year. I'm not always able to attend meetings, but I do pay attention. Today, I'm here to share my strong support for updating our code to require physical leashes on, for dogs in public. I know many dog owners are responsible, but this change will help keep everyone safe by addressing situations where dogs might be unpredictable or pose a risk. From an insurance standpoint, clear leash rules help lower the chance of injuries and costly claims, and shows that the Village is serious about safety. On a personal note, I was attacked by a dog as a kid, so I understand how scary and traumatic that can be. This is why I believe leash requirements aren't just practical, they're necessary. I want our Village to be safe, welcoming place, where everyone feels comfortable. Supporting this update's a smart, responsible way to protect our community. And I agree with what Deb had mentioned, too, about having record for rabies and dogs. It's very important to move quickly if there ever was a bite, and having that on record can be very important for treatment of anybody who has injury. So I just want to thank you so much for your time and consideration.
Thanks.
Hi.
I'm Kelly Pickering, and I'm the Village Dog Walker. First of all, I just want to say, I don't know if there's anybody in the whole world that loves dogs more than I do, and in a perfect world, I would love it if they could all be out. It would be awesome, but they are animals, they can be unpredictable, who knows what triggers them. I really believe that the Village has more dogs today than ever. I mean, everybody has dogs. And like I said, they are animals, and they can be unpredictable, and I think that many dog owners have their dogs very well-trained. I know of a couple that, you know, their dogs sit outside all day, they never cross the road, they never charge anybody, but then there are others who do, and I have been charged at with my dogs before. So I am definitely in favor of them being on leash all the time when they're not at home. And this is, this is a little bit off-topic, but I also would encourage people to not put their electric fences on their front yards, because dogs just come charging out. Sometimes they go through the fence, and it scares the death out of everybody, you know? And so I think that, that would be something to consider, is to keep the electric fences in the back. But that's it.
Okay. Well, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm representing the old ladies lobby. Who would, I'm Judy Walters-Danie. I would prefer that people did keep their dogs leashed, because even in my size, I hate to have a dog come running at me, and you just don't know. I have a very well-trained dog who really listens to me, follows me around like glue until she doesn't. And if a squirrel goes right by his, forget it. She does not care what I'm telling her. So I think that, I think under control is under control until it's not, and I really believe the leash is a good idea.
Thank you.
Thanks.
I wasn't going to, I didn't know this was on the agenda. I wasn't here to talk about this, but I'll add my two cents as a citizen now, not as a part of Historic Altamont. First, one question. The complaints, are they confidential?
Yes, I think so. Let me go to council on that. Are they, I mean, when we have a complaint from our, to our Police Department, they're confidential, correct? Yes, I wanted to say yes, but I wanted to make sure.
So to prevent neighbor versus neighbor, oh, you turned me in, and that, okay, so they are confidential. That's very important, or your people are not going to want to follow through. And second, I don't know if this is still in place, I looked it up a couple of years ago, from Gilderlin, and they had in their law, patterned or persistent barking. And where that solves a problem, in my neighborhood, there's one family that has a few dogs, and they bark at anybody that walks by, not for 10 minutes straight, but every five minutes you get barking, and then it's quiet, and then barking, and then quiet. So you have a pattern there, and over the course of a day, a week, a month, a year, the pattern can get very, very annoying. So I would hope that maybe you could put some provision in there that would address those types of issues also.
We went back and forth on that, and that's why we have it down as intermittently over a 30-minute period, because that's what, that's the same as Gilderlin's.
Okay.
So it is intermittent, it's a pattern throughout that 30 minutes.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
Sure. Anybody else? I'm not seeing any movement. I don't want to just assume. Okay, I'm not seeing any other movement, and if no one has anything else, I look for a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
So moved, John, and Michelle is second. And roll call, please.
Trustee Sarafino.
In favor.
Trustee Ganance.
In favor.
Trustee Scally.
In favor.
Mayor Danie.
In favor. Just wanted to ask the Board at this time, before I go on to the process of this law that we're discussing, do you have any comments that you want to share at this time on, about what you're thinking about the law itself? I mean, you all had a chance to look at the draft prior and add to it, or change words, or things like that, so. Does anybody else want to?
Given that we had more instances that had called our attention, and this is the reason why we're here at this point.
It is.
Yes.
We did have some situations during the summer. Camp counselors had to call our police officers because we had loose dogs during camp. That happened a couple of times, and that was another thing that said, okay, we got to really get back to this, because these are, it had happened in the past, but it was seeming it was getting a little bit too often. That was one thing. I do think it's smart, because I do think, personally, I've had dogs my whole life, I love them, but again, you don't know each other's dogs, and I am, when I'm walking somebody else's dog, because I dog sit a lot for my family, I am always worried about the dogs coming up to me, especially if they say, well, they're nice. Well, the dog I have is usually a little timid anyway, and I don't know, you know? So I think it's nice to have that physical leash, and you can kind of let them, you know, meet each other without having to worry sometimes, you know? I think personally, for the safety of the animals, I don't, you know, people are one thing, but I just think when dogs are unpredictable, I hate to think they're chasing a squirrel, they jump in the road. We have too many roads, and I'm always, that's my fear. I think this helps them also, the pet itself, so that's just my few comments on it. And I'm glad we had a chance to go back to this and, you know, readdress some of these points.
Especially with the unpredictability.
That, yes, and that's, and that's what.
And she is correct about that.
Yeah, Kelly was talking about that, and I think that's the biggest part of their animals.
Yeah.
Well, that and common courtesy.
Yeah.
I'm sorry?
Common courtesy. Live in a village with.
I mean, I walk a dog with a leash, and the Police Department's aware that they're going to be taking on some of the burden of the complaints.
They know, and I think they have been all these years. We don't have a big problem with this, it's not a huge problem. It's, but we have had some issues, and this is a way just to make sure that we stay safe. And I think, especially, I look at the camp and the kids at camp, or the kids on the playgrounds, it's kind of important to, you know, include that, just because we have little toddlers at the top park, and I don't want a dog with toddlers that are, you know, tiny, or bigger kids at Bosunkell or something, so. Okay, so moving on, we have to look at, item three on the agenda is reviewing seeker for this law of 2025. The reason that we end up doing seeker for any kind of, it's because of any kind of zoning change kicks that into action, and James, correct me if I'm wrong, but that's why we have a seeker for this. So all the, all the, I have to get to my seeker, I apologize. I have too many pages in front of me, so let me get to my seeker.
Which one's in there?
I know. I want the first one, though. I was at the second one. So the first seeker. So part one, you guys saw down in question, it says, does the proposed action only involve, does it involve the legislative adoption of a plan, a local law, and ordinance? The answer is yes. The other stuff on this does not apply to what we're doing. So you're all good with that?
Yep.
All right? Everybody was good with part one. So that is item three. And then I'm moving on to item four. So item four is, let me get my neg deck here. Yep, I just, just want to make sure. So, is that the part two?
Yeah.
Yes, all right, sorry about that. So on part two, going down our seeker form, we have one through 11 questions, and basically, will this have a small impact or a large or moderate impact on this? If you notice, everything on here is checked off, you know, I'll give you an example, will the proposed action create a material conflict with adopted land or land use plans? It is no, or a small impact. So all of those are down as no and small impact. Is everybody in agreement with that?
Yes.
Okay. I'm going to move on to item, let me see, three, or four, yep, but I'm just trying to see. James, am I doing this wrong? I'm looking for the neg deck page, like.
Okay, so you're going to look to.
Is it right here, though? Are my eyes right over?
No.
Thank you, sorry. That's, I'm like, not on the right page. Thank you so much. So, so four is, consider approving resolution issuing a neg declaration for a proposed land law amending Chapter 124 of the Village Code regulating the control of dogs, which is the resolution. Can I have a motion for that?
So moved.
James, sorry. Move me over. John is first, and could I have a second?
A second.
Sandra? And roll call, please.
Trustee Sarafino.
In favor.
Trustee Ganance.
In favor.
Trustee Scally.
In favor.
Mayor Danie.
In favor. So I just want to say the last thing, so this says, after a lot of whereas's that address the law, the Village Board determined that adoption of the proposed law will not have a significant adverse impact on the environment, so that's what we just voted on there.
Negative impact.
And then item five, which I actually have my, I do, because I have it, I have it marked. There it is. See? I have a.
Resolution.
Yeah, but I have to get to the resolution. So I would ask for a motion that the proposed local law, number one of 2025, is hereby adopted, and the town clerk is hereby directed to file the said local law with the Office of the Secretary of State in accordance with the state law. Could I have a motion for that? Michelle is first. Second?
I'll second.
Sandra?
I can't get in first.
No, you can't. Ah, sorry, and roll call, please.
Trustee Serafino?
In favor.
Trustee Ganance?
In favor.
Trustee Scally?
In favor.
Mayor Denine?
In favor. So it passes, and we will file that, and thank you very much for participating and helping us out with that. I think it'll be great for the village, I really do.
I agree.
And I'm just gonna ask real quick, did I miss anything that I should have? I'm good? Okay. I told them to interrupt me if I forgot something. All right, excellent, all right. Item six, I'm gonna, yep, item six. Consider approving the maintenance and access easement with the Twilight Property Management LLC 127 Main Street, tax map 37.19-2-8. We had done, we needed four easements to do some maintenance work for the Sand Street drainage project. We had three that we adopted maybe a month ago, and so this is the fourth one that came in, so that's what this is. It lets us finish this project right up. So could I have a motion for that?
I'll motion.
Sandra is second.
Second.
John is second, and roll call, please.
Trustee Serafino?
In favor.
Trustee Ganance?
In favor.
Trustee Scally?
In favor.
Mayor Denine?
In favor. Item seven is consider approving standard workday and reporting resolution for elected and appointed officials. This is something new. We do this at every April organizational meeting for full-time staff in the village, but this is a new thing for elected officials as well, so that's why it's on there now. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
John is second, is Michelle, and roll call, please.
Trustee Serafino?
In favor.
Trustee Ganance?
In favor.
Trustee Scally?
In favor.
Mayor Denine?
In favor. Eight is consider authorizing Mayor Denine to sign renewal contract with CDPHP for health insurance for retired employees. Can I have a motion for that? Sandra is second.
Second.
John, somebody don't leave me out there. And roll call, please.
Trustee Serafino?
In favor.
Trustee Ganance?